I'd like to call the meeting in order, and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
And, as is our custom, we have a new Wednesday's pet. Ms. Stenick, would you take the floor?
Okay, this is Dennis the Menace. He is a pup. He's between a year and a half and two years old, and he seems to be friendly with everybody. He will give you a test of his voice every now and then, but other than that, seems very friendly and convenient. He can be found at 211 Wood Rad Highway. The telephone number there is?
254-4857.
254-4857. And, everybody has been adopted so far. I am supposed to tell you that there are a number of cats at the town right now, so if anybody needs a cat?
Overrun with cats and kittens.
Cats and kittens, come stop by. Thank you.
Undefeated and still champion, dog seller, Sherri. Wow, way to go. Congratulations, Dennis. And thank you, Sherri.
Do you do that once a month, though?
Yeah. All right. First up on our agenda is an Order of Recognition. Is Mr. Snyderker here? Didn't see him coming in. All right, then, with the board's permission, we'll hold off on that just a bit. As I told you. Next up is, would be, an appointment by the Board of Selectmen for the Board of Finance, Mr. Jim Walsh. Mr. Walsh here. Do you know if Jim's gonna come, right?
I'm not sure.
All right, well, we will, with the board's permission, actually, let's do it officially. Can we table that for now? Can I have a motion to table?
So.
All right. Mr. Kiley, second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
And that will let us come back to that later this meeting. All right. Next up, may I have a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Joseph A. Rooney from 90 Campbell Road, the Library Board of Trustees?
So moved, sir.
Second.
All right. Is Mr. Campbell here? Or Mr. Rooney here, sorry?
I'm proud of him.
Mr. Rooney? Okay, good. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Rooney? Go ahead.
Thank you. And I had a chance to speak with Mr. Rooney earlier, and I know that the library board, per process, has appointed him and put his nomination before us today, and I am glad to see that you're willing to serve. I think you bring some good experience, and I'm grateful for your willingness.
Thank you. Mr. Kiley?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank Mr. Rooney for stepping up and taking this position. You have a great background, and please let us know how we can help you, and best of luck to you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you.
Okay. And again, stepping on both my colleagues' comments or building on those, I think that, same thing, Fairfield is very much run by volunteers. It's people like yourself stepping up that make our town special and make it a better place, and a library is no better place to start. So it's a valuable resource for our town, and again, thank you for continuing to step on. I enjoyed our conversation and getting to know more about you, and I look forward to working with you in the years ahead. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Rooney. Thank you. Would you care to say a few words?
I look forward to working with you.
If you would, we need to ask you to come up to the mic.
Sure.
Please.
So I look forward to working with the other members of the board, and committed to helping the library be the resource that it has been for many years, and to work with the rest of the town toward that purpose.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's done. How do we take something off the table? Since, Mr., I see, we have got a new attendee in back. With the board's permission, I'd like to bring that item before us again. We have special recognition from one of our longtime community servants, I guess I would call it, from the, also in the library line, except at our Southport location, the Pequot Library, Mr. Daniel Snyderker. And, Mr. Snyderker, I can ask you to come up to the mic. There's a bit of a proclamation we'd like to read on your behalf. From the town of Fairfield, whereas on July 11, 2012, Daniel Snyderker will be recognized by the Board of Selectmen and the town of Fairfield for eight years of dedicated service as the executive director of the Pequot Library in Southport, Connecticut. And whereas, Daniel was originally engaged by the Pequot Library in part to head the restoration of the library's historical building and to regenerate interest in the library's very rare special collections, which include rare books and manuscripts from colonial America. And whereas, Pequot Library has achieved a series of significant accomplishments under Daniel's leadership. These achievements include an award for restoration work from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, a significant increase in patronage and attendance at library programs and activities, expansion of children's activities and musical offerings, an award-winning website, several initiatives to ensure the library remains a leader in the use of technology, and a rise in the number of teachers who participate in the library's Books for Teachers program. And whereas, Daniel plans to author a number of books upon retirement. A number?
A number.
All right.
Three, we're...
I trust you have your own shelf?
Yes.
One of the books that he intends to write is a guide and catalog of the Pequot Library's special collections. Daniel will include more than 200 illustrated biographies of the most interesting and important items in the special collections. In addition, he will also continue on with the library as a part-time curator of the special collections. And whereas, Daniel has demonstrated an extraordinary level of dedication and professionalism, and has been an integral part of making Pequot Library what it is today, a center of cultural enrichment for all. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetra, first selectman of the town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 11, 2012, as Daniel Snyderker Day in Fairfield and throughout the realm. Congratulations. If I might, would anyone else on the board have anything to add?
Well, it's hard to add to that, and it's hard to add to the accomplishments that Dan has provided our town and the library. I did want to throw out a special thanks to you for, in addition to everything that Mike just mentioned, the increased communications that the Pequot Library now has, the emails, the reach-outs, which let everyone know about these great programs, the music programs, the children's events, and, you know, it's that means of communication that is both professionally done and on time that allows everyone to know what's going on, and thank you for that. It's a great model.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to echo the thanks and just tell a little personal story, because you have done many remarkable things in terms of some collections and the building and programs, but you've also touched a lot of individuals' lives. And last summer, after my family and I went to the summer book sale, which is coming up in a few weeks, my son found a car design yearbook and wrote about the Pequot book sale in his writing at school. And you realize what a tremendous impact that that event, as just one thing, has had, and I realize just personally on one level. So you have really impacted many people's lives in terms of their ability to access information and knowledge and dreams. So, thank you for that.
And from my personal standpoint, I appreciate you, your stewardship, in terms of keeping the Pequot Library alive and well and making it a continued valuable resource to the town. My first experience with the Pequot Library, I was four and five. I was going to summer camp at Wakeman Boys Club, and we used to walk over to the Pequot Library, sit out underneath that big tree, and get red stories, too. My second big experience with that was when I was in high school, and we were doing a special project. We came down and used extensively the Pequot Library resources, put together a whole multimedia presentation, and got an A in at least two classes. So, thank you for all of that. So with all of that, let us come up and, if you'll join me, board members, and officially give you the proclamation. And thank you, officially, on behalf of the town of Fairfield, for all that you've done.
I really appreciate it very, very much.
So much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Congratulations, and good luck.
Thank you.
And if you'd like, this is your chance to say a few words. Rebuttal.
You're all wrong. I just want to say, thank you so much. This is a high honor. It's been my real privilege to serve not just the library, but the whole town, the whole region, and this recognition is, you know, makes it worthwhile. I'm really very touched and very appreciative. I do have to say that I could not have done it without the staff at Pequot Library. They are an exceptional group of people. They're the ones that I'm going to miss. I'll miss you guys, too, but working with them has been a distinct honor and a pleasure. They have contributed every bit as much as I have. I'd like to say the same about the Board of Trustees at the library. They, too, are dedicated to this notion of service, and they have been wonderful to work with as well. And, you know, through my continued work with the special collections, I hope to, with that new focus, I hope to really bring that collection to the community in an even stronger way. I was at a week-long session at the Rare Book School at the University of Virginia this past week, and came away with just a whole new perspective on how we can use that special collection as a teaching asset. Rather than just a repository that scholars come and use, we can really put it to work for the town of Fairfield, for the people of the state of Connecticut, and I look forward to that continued role. But again, thank you all very much for this very high honor. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you again. And then, if I might, seeing that we have another new face joining us, take the item from before off the table. Can I have a motion to untable that?
No.
Okay. Motion by Kristen, second by Kevin. So back before us, then, is item number five, appointment for the Board of Finance, Mr. James Walsh, 83 Crash Street, replacing Selectman Kevin Kiley. May I have a move to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
May I, sir?
Yes, please.
Mr. Tetra?
It is my pleasure to both reintroduce and to nominate Jim Walsh for the vacancy on the Board of Finance. It has been my pleasure and my privilege to know Jim personally and through Town Affairs for over a decade. And for those 10-plus years that I have known Jim, he has always worked hard, he has always been informed, he's always been fair and reasonable, and above all, he's always put the interest of the town of Fairfield ahead of everything else. It's an admirable trait that he has always displayed, and one that I know, combined with his hard work, will make him a valuable member of the Board of Finance. In addition to that, Jim has done a marvelous job working with the Board of Finance as a Board of Selectmen member, and prior to that, as an RTM member on the budget. Every year, he comes to all the budget sessions, he's informed, he's articulate, he asks great and probing questions, and collectively, he has been a great part of our team, but has allowed our town to make good financial decisions and investments in our future. So it is my honor to nominate Jim to fill the vacancy on the Board of Finance.
Kristen, would you have anything to say?
I would love to. Mr. Walsh, former Selectman, former RTM member, and soon-to-be Board of Finance member. You've hit them all, or will be. I'm being presumptive, actually. We haven't voted yet. But I certainly, as I had said to you in previous conversation, respect and understand your decision to leave this board, and I am sad to see you go. I certainly welcome Mr. Kiley. It's been a pleasure to work with you, both in the past on the RTM and as a Board of Selectman member, and I'm very grateful that you're willing to continue so that we can keep working together and stay, have time together at the budget hearings again next year. But you have just done a phenomenal job. I think Kevin said it very well. You, I find, and I have found in our conversations, that you do your homework, you ask great questions, and whenever we have disagreed, it's always been in such a respectful way, and I really am grateful for that, as I think that we need to have more of that in public discourse today. So I'm grateful that you're willing to serve, and I, we do have something, I'll let you in.
Yes. I did want to add, and I agree with both my colleagues, I also want to say that I've never heard anyone question Jim's hard work or his enthusiasm, passion, that he goes about this job, and I think that enthusiasm has been a great help to the town and to this board in working together with them. And I will go back a few years to my first experience working at a committee with Jim. The School Reimbursement Committee, we were looking at a rather convoluted set of circumstances to try and figure out how much money was owed, where it came from, who should follow up on it with respect to school building projects, how to get our millions of dollars literally released from the state. And because of the five members on the board and, or on the committee, and our complicated work schedule, we were traditionally meeting at 7:00 AM in Jim's offices. So we didn't have to worry about a whole lot of extra seats for the public, even though the meetings were open to the public. For some reason, the press didn't show up as often. However, we worked well together, we learned how to disagree respectfully, had some great arguments, some great discussions, but importantly, coming out of that, and it was, at the time, a bit of a controversial committee in terms of how it was set up and what some of the issues were, we came out of that with a well-written report that was unanimously approved both by the committee and accepted by the RTM, the first selectman and superintendent at that time. And I think if I look at how things should work in town government, I'll always go back to that committee and say, that's one of the ways to get it done, and I compliment Jim again for being such an important part of that and helping us focus on the issues. I will always, and I quote him often, when we're having a discussion with somebody and it'll get down to, okay, you say that's how it happened, could you show me that in writing? Where's the documentation that supports that? And I think, when I first heard Jim ask that, I'm like, oh, come on. More often than not, I found out how important that was to see exactly how the documentation read and what was really written down and not what somebody's memory said it was. No disrespect to anybody's memory, just how important it was to get the actual record or the actual documents on the record. And I think if you said that once during our committee meetings, you must have said it 50 times, and I remember you every time I say it, because I'm now using that same phrase. So thank you for that. Should we, we should vote first, I think. I think, with your permission. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. Now, if you would come up to the podium, please, sir. We do have, well, we'll let you talk first. We'll give you a shot. Your rebuttal.
Hey, don't want to give me a rebuttal. There's a long one last night. Anyway, I'd like to thank you all for your kind words, Kevin for nominating me, and Mike and Kristen. And for Mike and Kristen, it was a pleasure serving with you for the short time we served, but we've served together in other capacities for many years, and you've not only become colleagues, but you've become friends over time, even though we respectfully disagreed over that period of time. And while I'm saddened to have left this table, it was an honor the entire time that I served as a member of the Selectmen and worked for the town of Fairfield, but I am looking forward, actually, to go on the Board of Finance, despite my short retirement. It's been a board that I've always respected, especially over, say, you know, going back, it's been a board I've always respected, because I've always found them to be a very nonpartisan, collegial, and always trying to do what's best in the financial interest of this town, and to continue to maintain our AAA bond rating is no small feat. So, you know, I originally tried to get on internally, through internal politics on that board about 10 years ago, and it's taken me a long time to get there, but I'm finally going to get there, and I'm looking forward to it. There's a lot of challenges ahead. Our budgets haven't gone through the process, not only on the RTM, but more deeply while on the Board of Selectmen, while serving with the Board of Finance, and digging deep on some of those issues. It's going to be difficult over the next number of years, as you all know, but I look forward to that challenge and to try to keep the tax rate as low as possible for this town while supplying us reasonable services. So I look forward to it, but I cannot thank you enough for your kind words, and I look forward to serving with all of you again. Thank you very much.
Mr. Walsh, thank you. Before you go, we are going to miss you. And we kind of assumed you'd miss us. So, we got you a little something to remember us by.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You got to open it here.
Okay. All right. Yes, you got to open it.
Thank you, Mike. Congratulations. Thanks.
You don't have to read the card out loud. Yeah, we are.
It's the key to the town I've been waiting for all year.
It'll open some doors, I'm not sure. High security. Oh, that's great. That's great. It's just a picture of me, Mike, and Kristen.
It's from the swearing-in.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you very much, guys.
Kristen did ask me to remind you that... Small box. Kristen did ask me to remind you that after 30 days, you can't change the photo.
I will never change the photo. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, for the time.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Mr. Walsh, is there asking questions?
All right. Mary Carroll Merrillis here?
I don't know.
Judy, if you could find out, I don't know if our next presenter's here or not. What we'll do if we're not, we'll just table that and move on to the next item.
Sure.
See, I have to have the air conditioning back and working.
Yeah.
Is Mary coming over to you?
Coming.
Okay.
This is the top page, and it looks in the back, and I think it's... Tony, got it, Charlie?
All right, thank you. All right, then, Mary, thank you. Next up on the agenda is to hear an update on the ECC settlement agreement dated June 19, 2012. Attorney General Kale, are you going to step us through this?
I'd be delighted to. That's your pleasure.
All right, yes, please. And thank you for coming down today.
My pleasure. Thanks for inviting me. Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to report to you that we have reached a contract settlement with your dispatchers, who are represented by the Communications Workers of America. That settlement was reached last month, and I'd like to outline the terms of that settlement for you. I want to start by thanking the Dispatchers Union for recognizing that the paradigm in public-sector collective bargaining has changed, and that it's time for us all to work together to come up with appropriate settlements that are affordable to municipalities in Connecticut, because I think you will see that the settlement that they recommended to their membership, in which their membership has ratified prior to this meeting, does recognize that fact. And so I appreciate that, and want to start my comments by recognizing that. The contract settlement is for a four-year term. You recall, one of the concerns I expressed when I first started working with the town is that all the seven contracts expired at the same time in the past. It becomes very problematic and cumbersome to try to negotiate with seven different unions in one community at one time. And so our goal, as part of going forward, was to stagger some of the contracts so that some would expire in one year and others would expire in an out year. So this contract would give us a four-year settlement as opposed to a standard three-year settlement. So that's something good unto itself, as long as the terms are acceptable. With regard to the terms, we'll start in order of the settlement that you have before you. The wage rates that we negotiated are as follows. This settlement was reached at the end of June. The contract expired June 2012. The contract expired on June 30, 2010. The settlement we reached with the dispatchers provides that they will not receive a general wage increase retroactive to 2010, July 1, 2010, when they otherwise would have. They will also not receive a general wage increase retroactive to July 1, 2011. So part of the value of this settlement for the town is that it doesn't require the town to come up with funds to retroactively pay for raises that were foregone as a result of the protracted negotiations. So the first wage increase that will take effect under the terms of this settlement would be a 2% wage increase that will be effective July 1, 2012. Okay? So that's the first raise that we'll hit. We will also increase the wage rates of dispatchers by 2% effective upon the legislative body's ratification of the settlement, assuming that the legislative body accepts our recommendation to ratify this settlement. So it'll be two 2% increases close in time, but none of which shall be retroactive to the two years past when this contract has expired. There will then be a final wage increase, July 1, 2013, of 2 and 1/4%. So over the four years of the contract, the total wage increase will be 6.25%, or, when averaged on an annual basis, approximately just slightly over 1.5% per year, which is very good in terms of what's happening in the public-sector marketplace. It's especially good for the town in light of the fact that it doesn't need to come up with funds to fund retroactive pay increases. That's the wage component of the settlement. There are other important components for you to be aware of. With regard to medical insurance, health, vision, prescription, and dental, beginning upon ratification of the settlement, the dispatchers have agreed to the planned design changes that the town has been proposing since 2010. This will increase utilization costs under the PPO or the Preferred Provider Organization Plan. So when someone utilizes services, they're... It's especially good for the town in light of the fact that it doesn't need to come up with funds to fund retroactive pay increases. That's the wage component of the settlement. There are other important components for you to be aware of. With regard to medical insurance, health, vision, prescription, and dental, beginning upon ratification of the settlement, the dispatchers have agreed to the planned design changes that the town has been proposing since 2010. This will increase utilization costs under the PPO or the Preferred Provider Organization Plan. So, when someone utilizes services, their co-pays for utilization will change. The way they will change is outlined in the attachment to the settlement. Office visit co-pays double, hospital co-pays go up by 50%, urgent care co-pays double, emergency room co-pays double, and you'll see all of the different co-pays that apply when you utilize the services. So, that's something that was very important to the town. That's something the town's been seeking since 2010. As part of the settlement, the dispatchers have agreed that that medical plan will be the new medical plan, and that will result in premium savings both to the town and to the dispatchers. In the past, it wouldn't have mattered for the employees, because in the past, employees paid a flat fixed dollar amount towards the cost of the premiums of medical insurance, regardless of what those premiums were. For the dispatchers, they paid $31 towards the cost of medical insurance. We negotiated a settlement consistent with our goal to make or to have employees pay a percentage of the premiums as those premiums go up or down based on utilization and what they elect. So, under the terms of the settlement, instead of paying a flat $31 towards the cost of the insurance, dispatchers have agreed that effective upon ratification, they will change their percentage from a flat dollar amount to 10% of whatever the premium costs are for the level of coverage they elect, whether it be single coverage, just for the employee, single plus spouse, or family coverage. That's dramatically different than what has been in place in the past, and the first time, to my knowledge, within the town that we have had employees come to negotiations and agree to pay based on utilization as a percentage of cost. Those who are hired on or after July 1, 2012, will pay 12% of the premium cost. Those cost percentages will increase, those premium share percentages will increase by a percent effective July 1, 2013. So, employees hired prior to July 1, 2012 will pay 11% of the premium cost as they go up or down, and those hired after July 1, 2012 will pay an additional percentage, or 13% of the premium cost. Okay? With regard to the pension, we achieved the goal of the town to have all new hires participate in a defined contribution 401A plan and not participate in the town's defined benefit pension plan. That was one of the key factors in all of the prior negotiations that the town sought, and this group agreed that for anyone hired on or after July 1, 2012, they will participate in the 401A plan as proposed by the town in lieu of the defined benefit pension plan that has applied to all town employees previously. So, that was an important element of the settlement. Next, in the past, when individuals retired from service in this unit, as they do in other units, they would retire from service and enjoy retirement insurance following their retirement. They paid nothing towards the cost of insurance until they reached age 65, in which case they converted to a Medicare Supplement Plan and received that benefit for free. They also were locked into the benefit that they enjoyed at the time that they left service. There were two goals for the town in these negotiations. One was that retirees would enjoy a benefit but would not be fixed in terms of the benefit that took place at the time of retirement, but would receive whatever benefit active employees have as those benefits change from time to time. And they will naturally evolve from time to time based on the marketplace, the financial capability of the town, and what gets bargained in collective bargaining. The dispatchers agreed that they will receive benefits in retirement, not fixed at the time they left, but as those benefits evolve from time to time for active employees. They also agreed, for the first time, that they too will contribute towards the cost of those benefits even in retirement at the same rate as active employees contribute. So, no longer will post-employment medical benefits be cost, will be free for retirees in the unit. Rather, they will pay the same amount as a percentage of premium costs that active employees pay as those percentages evolve from time to time. There were four exceptions to that. There were four bargaining unit employees who were listed in the settlement who had, at the time, 20 or more years of service. And so, the town agreed to grandfather those employees, because they were so close to retirement, such that when those four named employees who have 20 or more years of service retire, they will continue to enjoy the benefit that other town employees have always enjoyed in the past, which is that they, while the benefit will change for them as active employees' benefits change, they will not contribute to the cost. But with the exception of those four employees, all other bargaining employees presently employed by the town or who may be hired in the future at retirement will contribute to the cost of retiring medical benefits. Finally, we clarified the importance that a dependent, for the purposes of retiree benefits, must be someone who was a dependent at the time of retirement, another important goal for the town. Those who become future dependents following retirement are not eligible to participate under the terms of this settlement in the town's post-employment medical plan as a dependent on the town's cost. There were reductions in the paid sick leave that's contained in the contract. Those who work over 10 years of service agreed to reduce their paid sick leave by eight days. Now, I'm sure most of them don't utilize these days, but contractually, under the prior contract, they had the right to take up to 30 days of paid sick leave. That amount was reduced to 22 days for a reduction of eight. For those who were employed with five years of service to 10 years of service, under the prior contract the town had agreed upon, they were eligible to receive up to 20 days of paid vacation, and they agreed to reduce that amount by four days so that the maximum amount of vacation that they could possibly take in any one year will be 16 days under the terms of the new contract. We also agreed to modify the language as to when employees begin earning sick leave, and this applies to people who are early in their service. In the past, employees started earning paid sick leave at the rate of one day a month after three months of service, and the union agreed that they won't earn any sick days until they complete a full six months of service or complete their probationary period, which is a six-month period. So, that will reduce slightly individuals at the time of hire so that they won't earn sick leave benefits until they've completed six months of service. The workers' compensation supplement benefit was changed. When an individual incurs a work-related injury, under the terms of the prior contract, depending on years of service, they would be paid their full pay for up to 30 days. Workers' compensation is a state-mandated benefit. You can self-insure that benefit, which the town of Fairfield does, or you can purchase insurance. That benefit provides 66.23% of your regular pay, but on a tax-free basis, based on the state law. This involved, the contractual benefit that we had in the past required the town to supplement that benefit by paying full pay for up to 30 days for employees with at least 10 or more years of service. We agreed as part of this settlement that the town will no longer do that, that any worker who wanted to supplement pay in excess of the 66.23% that the workers' compensation benefit provides will be required to utilize sick time, which will further allow us to take credit against the sick leave account to the extent someone elects to do that. So, if you want to supplement your pay, you will have to utilize a portion of a sick leave day in order for that to happen. The town will not give the extra compensation for up to 30 days with no consequences to the benefit accounts. Finally, and this may not mean a lot to you, this was very important to the police officers who managed the dispatchers. There was contract language contained in the prior contract that required all standard operating procedures to be negotiable, such that no changes could be made to procedures until the town sat down and collectively bargained over those procedures. That required a lot of administrative time on negotiating the terms of procedures, such as how will we respond to calls, what will be the order of response. Those are not subjects of bargaining under the law, and through negotiations, we agreed that except for procedures that deal with mandatory subjects of bargaining, wages, the hours of work, or other conditions of employment, all standard operating procedures will no longer be contractually required to be bargained, that the town's management shall have the right to determine, in accordance with its management prerogative to manage the operation of the Police Department, how individuals will perform their job. We will bargain, to the extent we want to change their hours of work, their wages, how they'll be paid for overtime, or anything that deals with mandatory subjects of bargaining, but we have removed from the contract any obligation to bargain over any non-mandatory subject of bargaining as it relates to an SOP, otherwise referred to as a standard operating procedure within the Police Department. That concludes the summary of the changes that the dispatchers bargaining unit agreed to for a contract covering the period of July 1, 2010, through June 30, 2014.
Thank you. Any questions on the board?
I have a few. And pardon me, I'm getting to this game a bit late.
No, no.
So, I might have some questions that you folks have already answered or have heard before, but just a few basic things to get me up to speed. How many members are in this bargaining unit?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, so those four members that are carved out represent about 25%.
Correct.
Okay, that helps me out. As it relates to the percentage of premium for the medical insurance that the employees are now paying, can you give me what the definition of the premium is?
Yes.
Because it's my understanding, well, why don't you just give me the definition of that?
Well, you need to know what the, the premium depends-
Right.
-on, it's really not a premium, because we self-insure our benefits in Fairfield.
Hence my question.
It is a premium equivalent cost.
Right.
At the end of the year, someone who's an actuary, meaning smarter than me, takes all of our costs and calculates what the premium equivalent is for that utilization. And based on utilization, will project, plus inflation, the cost of medical inflation in the future year, will project what it will cost to fund future claims based on past experience. And the premium equivalent costs are different based on the level of coverage elected, whether it be single, two-person, or family coverage.
Right.
In the past, okay, and this applies not just to the dispatchers, but every bargaining unit in town, and the number may be a dollar off here or there, but for the dispatchers now, the dispatchers paid $31 a week or $1,612 a year, regardless of whether they had single coverage, two-person coverage, or family coverage.
Okay.
Okay? Under the terms of the settlement that they agreed to, and I think they need to be recognized for the significance of this, because I'll tell you what the dollar amounts amount to in terms of their cost, because that's probably where you're going with this, right? Under the terms of the settlement, they agreed to pay 10% of the costs in the first year, 11% in the second year, and new hires paying 12 and 13, respectively.
Right.
Okay? For someone with family coverage, assuming the cost is $34,176, which is the projected cost for the future, that's $3,417, or a net increase of $1,805, assuming those numbers, assuming those are the premium equivalent costs for family coverage. Okay? If you had two-person coverage, and it's $26,000, you'll pay $2,600, which is a net increase of $1,000 in a year compared to what you were paying when you were paying $31 over 52 weeks, or $1,600. Okay? Those with single coverage now pay $1,234. So, single coverage folks will pay a little less than they were paying when they were paying the flat $31, right? They go down by $378 in the first year of the contract in terms of what they contribute. But in terms of the contributions that help the town pay for this benefit, more employees in the town have two-person or family coverage than have single coverage, and in terms of fairness, someone who's just getting benefits for themselves, from the town's perspective in the negotiations, and certainly the union acknowledged this through the negotiations process, it wasn't fair that someone who gets benefits for themselves would pay the same towards those benefits as someone who receives benefits for themselves, their spouse, and their entire family. And so, paying based on utilization, paying based on cost was our position, was a fairer, certainly a more customary way in terms of what's happening in the rest of the world, including the public sector marketplace, and ultimately was agreed upon. And it's a very significant change in terms of the way employees now have a vested interest in helping us control the total cost of premiums, because now they will pay based on a percentage of those premiums, as opposed to a fixed dollar amount, regardless of what the total cost will be.
It makes a lot of sense. It also might move some people off the plan who maybe were there because it was inexpensive and convenient.
Absolutely. I mean, now, 10% of a $30,000 plan is a real contribution, and if you are fortunate enough to have two spouses both with coverage, one of the secondary benefits for the town in terms of cost savings is it may cause someone, as you point out, to opt out of the town plan into another plan where now the cost is a real question as to where to go. Now, municipal benefits still tend to be better benefits in terms of total cost to the end user, but it's a very different paradigm with this approach than you pay $31 a week regardless of the cost.
Right. Thank you for that. That's helpful. Just a couple more quick things. Can you take me back? When I read through this, I think I may have read this incorrectly, the 2%, 2 and 1/4, and then 6 and 1/4% overall increase for the four years. I know there's no retroactive for 10, 11. There's no retroactive for 11, 12.
Correct.
So, is this now saying that if this is approved, I would get a 2% raise on June 30 of 2012, which gets again raised on July 1st? How do you get to the 12?
Yeah, here's how.
Or to the 6 and 1/4?
The first raise will be retroactive to July 1, 2012. We're sitting here today in July 11.
Okay.
So, just 11 days back, or depending on when the legislative body acts on this, it'll be retroactive to that date.
Right.
Okay? We couldn't possibly expect that a bargaining unit would take more than two full years of no wage increases. So, what we agreed upon in settling the contract was, in the third year, there will be a raise.
Right.
Now, you will get credit for a raise in the prior two years where you had no raise. We will give credit. There will be nothing retroactive, but you will get a second raise shortly after July 1, which will be effective upon the legislative body's ratification. So, in a very short time, you're going to get two 2% raises, or really a 4% raise in the 2012, 2013 fiscal year.
That was my question.
Correct. And then, just to get you to the 6 and 1/4, then a year later-
2 and 1/4.
-you will get 2 and 1/4. So, it's 6.75 over four years, 6.25, I apologize. Divided by four is about 1.57 per year.
Right, so, give or take a couple weeks in July, it's effectively four and then 2 and 1/4.
Correct.
Okay.
The important thing from the town's point of view is not having to come up with cash to retroactively pay raises. And the raw settlement numbers, which includes clearly a wage freeze in one full year forever into those settlements, was another important component. And an overall reasonable settlement, which is 1.57 a year over four years, and extending a fourth year so that we're not in the situation where we're bargaining over seven contracts again in 2013, which, as you all know, is a short period away.
That's correct. And my last question is, on the sick days, what is the current town policy for the carryover of sick days?
The current town policy?
Each contract is different.
Okay, then, within this contract, I shall rephrase that.
I believe it's 80, but if you're going to be able to clarify that.
Okay.
Two questions, anyway. What's, how much you're allowed to carry over per year, and what's the total bank allowed?
Yes, that would be good to know both.
Mary, what's the carryover per year allowed, and what's the total bank?
Okay. You know, I have a question in the meantime.
Okay.
Okay. I'm done, so thank you. I'm done, so thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
They are allowed to carry over 10 working days each year for a total of 120 days.
Yeah. Mary, could you come to the mic and say that, please? Thank you.
I thought I knew the answer, but each contract is different.
Right.
So, their contract says they're allowed to carry over 10 working days for a total of 120 days.
And that's consistent, both contract and the proposal?
That is the same as, and some contracts have.
Different.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Kristin?
Thank you for your presentation and walking us through, through that. I wanted to ask you a question about the workers' compensation supplement. And you said something about 30 days that caught my attention that was not in the write-up, and I wanted to be clear about that. I didn't read the section, so I wanted to just check in. The town is going to, if there's a workers' comp claim that is awarded, 66 and 2/3% of pay tax-free will be given to the employee for a period of 30 days? No. So, depending on the award, for the 30-day period, is, the question is, are the sick day, is the requirement to use the sick days just for the first 30-day period?
No.
So, what is?
Let me clarify, because I didn't, I mustn't have been clear when I said it the first time.
I'm not asking my question.
That's okay. I understand what you're asking.
Yes.
Yes. Under the workers' compensation laws, if you are injured while working for the town, if your injury arises out of, or in the course of your employment, is what the statute says, you receive workers' compensation benefits. Now, you may get those benefits for one day, if you're incapacitated for one day, twist your ankle when you're stepping out of the plow truck, or you may receive those workers' compensation benefits for in excess of a year, depending on the extent of your injury. And that's all statutory, non-contractual. The town must pay those benefits. There are two ways to pay them. You can go out into the market and purchase a medical, a workers' compensation insurance plan, you pay premiums, and then they'll pay your costs, and pass along your costs to you in the next year. Or you can do what the town of Fairfield does, which is to self-fund those plans. So, we don't have an insurance company. We, in the town, pay dollar for dollar as those benefits are paid. Under the terms of the prior contract, the town agreed, and the amount it would supplement, when I say supplement, I mean, we agreed to pay even in excess of the 66 and 2/3% for a certain number of days based on your years of service. So, if you had over 10 years of service, and you had a workers' compensation injury, for every injury, the first 30 days, we would, we agreed to provide employees with 30 days of full pay. So, we supplemented the 66 and 2/3% statutory with the additional 1/3 of full pay, so that they received 100% of pay for up to 30 days. That was the town agreeing to provide a greater benefit than the statute required for each injury up to the first 30 days, if you had over 10 years of service. If you had between five and 10 years of service, the supplement level was 20 days. So, for every workers' compensation injury, the first 20 days would be paid at full pay. And the town would just pay that full amount. If you had between one and five years, it was 12 days. If you had less than one year, it was one day per month of service. So, that's what we did. Also, the folks who administer workers' compensation will tell you, you know, it's a disincentive to getting people back to work if you're paying full pay while they're out, especially when part of the pay is not taxable. And so, in order to avoid that disincentive, with the goal being to drive down workers' compensation costs, which are very high for all employers, including public employers like the town, we proposed, and the union agreed, that we will no longer supplement based on any years of service for free. Meaning, if you have a workers' compensation injury now, under the terms of the settlement, you will get, paid by the town, what the statute calls for. If you would like to supplement it, right, if you would like to get additional compensation, you will need to use your own sick time. And we will debit your sick time accordingly in order to supplement those amounts. So, the town will no longer do it without consequence to an individual's paid sick leave. So, it's an individual decision as to whether they wish to do it, and if they do it, the time comes out of their own sick leave account.
And that they are, they may use as many of those days in the bank as.
Correct.
They would.
But they must use their own sick time to take it. Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
Certainly.
Obviously, joined two of those ideas together that you had expressed, so I appreciate that.
Can I follow up on that issue? I'm sorry. Do you have another one?
Just to follow up on that, you said the 66 and 2/3 of their pay that is tax-free, that is by state statute, that it's both provided and that it's tax-free?
Yeah.
It is, okay.
No, 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 it's not tax-free. When we pay them their full wages.
No.
They will be taxed.
Just the 66.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 66 and 2/3.
So, the 66 and 2/3 is tax-free, but that's tax-free by statute, not by town choice?
Right.
Okay, that's interesting. That's also inconsistent, even though statute makes it. So, it's inconsistent with what the private sector does, because in the private sector, the plans I administer, you have two choices. You can, the way, because if, if in the private sector, if the employee pays for the benefit versus the employer providing the benefit, and if the dollars that the employee uses to pay for that benefit are post-tax, meaning they don't get the pre-tax deduction, if both of those criteria are met, then the 66 and 2/3 would be tax-free to them.
Well, what you're talking about is a non-workers, non-work-related injury. That's a, that's a disability benefit.
It's a very similar type policy, yeah.
But it wouldn't apply to work-related injuries. That would apply to non-work-related injuries.
It would, okay.
What you're talking about is what the law is.
Right.
Depending on funding of a, of a non-work-related disability benefit. If I'm, if I'm on my sailboat and I fall off and injure myself, I will collect disability benefits, and my payout will depend upon whether I fund that myself or my employer funds it in terms of my payback.
Right.
For work-related injuries, though, if you receive work-related injuries, if you receive a work-related injury benefit, it's a tax-free benefit by statute.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes.
Well, good.
But just so I'm clear, but so I'm clear, I misspoke when I answered your question. Under the sick leave benefit that you must use under the terms of the settlement, I think you asked me, can I use sick leave regardless of how many number of days I want to offset or supplement? You're capped at the same 30, 20, 12 days as you were before, but now you have to use sick leave. I think what your question was, Kristin, was, can we use it for the full length of our leave? And I think when I, I think my initial answer was, yes, you can, but no. The statute, the settlement says, subject to the limits set forth in Section 12.01, and those limits are, up to 30 days for 10 years of service, up to 20 days for 15 to 10 years of service, up to 12 days for between one and five years of service. So, those same limits apply.
Okay, thank you. And that's, that must be what it was. I didn't have the section in front of me, and that.
That's why you couldn't understand, the reference to 12.01 is something, without having the contract, you wouldn't follow.
Thank you.
No, thank you for that.
Sure.
It's very helpful.
Good. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, no, this is great. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Kell, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thanks for inviting me. Good night.
All right. Next up, I may to here consider an act upon a request from the town attorney to authorize Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, to execute on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, a conservation and public recreation easement and agreement under the open space and watershed land acquisition program with the state of Connecticut, for financial assistance to acquire permanent interest in the land known as the Bridgeport Diocese property, OSWA 61, and to manage said land as open space, land pursuant to Section 7-131D of the General Connecticut statutes. May I have a motion to accept?
So may.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lesser, if you could, Attorney Lesser, if you could fill us in.
I've been here before, and the bottom line, based on what I have determined, and this goes back about 10 years, is that 10 years ago, the town bought this piece of property for about $4.4 million, using about $400,000 of a grant program that was available from the state at that time. And based on the statute, which I have provided you with copies of, if you look in that statute, which is Section 7-131D, and subsection E of that requires, mandates, at closing, a permanent conservation easement shall be executed for the property, which easement shall provide that the property shall remain forever predominantly in its natural and open condition for the specific conservation purposes. Additionally, at the time, our First Selectman signed an agreement entitled an Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Agreement with the state, and First Selectman Flato signed it in, it's been nine years, 2003. And there's a provision in that, I believe it's Paragraph 2, which also requires the town to give this easement. The easement was at the time attached to this agreement, and incidentally, I also provided you with some minutes from the RTM at the time when this appropriation was approved. And I think not everybody was in favor of it at the time, but it did pass. But, from what I understand, the easement was negotiated, and it was drawn up, and it was subsequently discovered that prior to the town's purchasing this property, there had been encroachments onto this land. From what I understand, there was a septic system, there were utility lines run across our property to serve one of the properties, and I think there were a couple of other encroachments, may have been a driveway. Tom Stanky apparently worked on that for a long time, and they subsequently resolved all those issues. I believe that they gave these people easements, at least temporary easements, so that they could utilize it. And from what I understand from Mr. Stanky, those encroachments were carved out of this conservation easement. So, they are not included, they're not covered by the easement. But everything else that we own is covered by the easement. I think that we're obligated to do this by statute and by contract, and I would just suggest that you approve it and pass it along to the RTM, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Attorney Lesser?
Just a quick one. Can you just provide us with your definition of passive recreation?
I think passive recreation is basically trails, and I think if you read the easement, it does talk about what you can do there. You can, I think you can even put up maybe some little shelters for people to sit on. You can maintain trails and things like that. You can't, you know, have active recreation, you know, ball field, swimming, buildings. We can't put any buildings up, no question about that. That's what I.
I just, I just wanted to get your interpretation of that definition.
It's basically open space.
And just to follow on that, we couldn't go in there and dig up any trenches or holes around utility lines or water lines or anything else through this space?
Well, I think, probably not, not, you can't build anything, so, I mean, if you wanted to put a water fountain or something, maybe you could do something like that, but I think you'd have to get permission.
Well, just going back to a discussion we had on our Board of Finance days.
Yeah.
At one point, the question was, is farming active or passive recreation?
I'm not going to get into that.
And in order, in order to support a farm or anything like that, that, at least in terms of our discussion, was in the gray area.
That's right.
Because I don't think we resolved that.
No.
You would need some other structures, other help, so that it's the other structures and supporting utilities that would most likely keep that from happening.
That's correct.
Is kind of where I was going.
Yeah.
The easement talks about development rights and restrictions, and it, no building, residential dwelling, et cetera, structure, parking lot, driveway, other temporary, permanent structures or improvements, they can't be built.
Right.
It's all set out. It's pretty specific, actually. Anything else?
Any questions?
No.
Well, I mean, the only comment I would make is, I mean, based on the legal interpretation, and based on the paperwork I've seen, and based on my memory from being on the Board of Finance when we purchased this back, it was prior to 2003. I, I'm not sure when the actual appropriation went through.
2000.
2000.
March 27, 2000 was the RTM.
So, and then the document.
You're older than you look.
I know, well, thank you. But, drawing on, you know, mostly memory from those meetings, from having approved and been to the RTM meetings as a Board of Finance member, the intent was for the land to be open space. It wasn't like somebody was standing in the back of the room saying, hey, I want to build a ball field here. I mean, maybe somebody wants to do that today, but that was never the intent, based on my recollection, of the sequence of events and the discussions and the meetings that took place. So, I would like to see it, you know, go forward as intended, which was open space.
Actually, yeah, I think the, a lot of the discussion that came up, I'm going to say three meetings ago, was really based on the fact that that hadn't been before the people on this board at the time.
Yeah.
So, we had some questions as to how come it took so long, what was the thinking, a rationale then, what options are available today, can we do this, can we do that, so we're making a fully informed decision, and hopefully, you know, vetting a number of those questions that the RTM might be asking in the future on us.
Right.
Given where we are, any questions from the public? Comments from, sorry, comments from the public? Could you please come up to the podium?
Thanks, Mike. I'm Dave Sturgis, 1135 Mill Hill Road in Southport. And to help recall everybody's understanding at the time, this particular piece, the town was quite fortunate to get, and with this 400-some-on-thousand-dollar charter oak grant from the state, it narrowed the, the deal with the Catholic Diocese in order to get this property purchased. It's a very strategic piece. I was closely involved as the president of the Mill Hill Association at the time. We worked quite a few years toward this, and with the town acquisition of this property, it is really Southport's first true, good-sized, public park. Its terrain is very sensitive, and it precludes any thought of active recreation, or development for that matter. Historically, it's acreage contains what is known as the Mill Hill Hollow section of Southport, and this was the area in which residents of the town fled to when the British burned the town in 1779. Preceding that, it has sites on it that is verified by the state archaeologist who we had come down and survey it, of Indian encampments. It has a known arrowhead site. Terrain-wise, it's either all ledge, or it's wet, and that's because it is the divide between the Mill Hill watershed and the Sasko Creek. And its drainage is very precarious and very pronounced. It affects the whole hilltop flora and fauna-wise, it contains one of the last mature standing groves of tulip and oak trees, and I'm sad to say from recent visits that Hurricane Irene wasn't terribly kind to them, but it's going to come back. And so, there was every reason and every incentive at the time to keep this acreage set aside as passive open space, and there's no alternative but to let it remain as such, and the town is the best steward. And we in the neighborhood look forward to this business finally being finished. The budding neighborhood encroachments and easements have been settled, and I think you can go forward in confidence to realize the, the limited use of this property. When the day comes, when our budget problems are a little less intense, the trails need to be developed, the use programs for passive reasons need to be developed as an educational source, so it's a fit. And I'm glad this is finally coming to an end in negotiations. I think the neighborhood certainly is pleased by it, and the state will be pleased, and it's a fit in every way. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
I'll leave with the board of history that I prepared and the background at the time for.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Why it was.
I'm sorry? Thank you. Jennifer, can you copy that out to the? Jennifer, get the copies of that out to the board.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, dear. All right. Anyone else? Please come up to the mic.
Marcia Beiner, 131 South Benson Road, and I'm delighted that the town attorney gave all the information that I was going to give myself. This is an important piece of land and something that a lot of us worked on. It started, it actually even started 20 years ago, when the Mill, when the Mill Hill people, the small group, started thinking about this land and were trying to work with the diocese. And then 10 years ago, when we all, the group, it was not just Mill Hill area, it was the whole, a lot of people in the town, hundreds of people in town, working to get this piece of property. And when the grant came through, there was a big celebration in this room, and the people who came to that celebration, when we got the grant for half, nearly half million dollars, was Lieutenant Governor Rell, who later became the governor, John Mastopolis, First Selectman, Kathy Tomniak, and many, many RTM members came right here to celebrate that we had gotten this grant. So this was a hard-fought thing, and the fact that it's documented that the DEP, the state, said it must remain as passive for all the obvious reasons, if you know the piece of land. I've walked it many times, through the mud and around. So thank you for giving all that information, greatly appreciated, and thank you.
Any other public comment? Please come up to the mic.
Board of Selectmen, Jane Cater, 1125 Oldfield Road. I was a member of the Land Acquisition Commission when this piece of property came up, and it was very exciting. I can't, I don't understand why we're here today, to tell you the truth. But anyway, it certainly should be accepted, and whatever loose ends slipped by should be tightened up. And I have faith that you will do that. I see this as a wake-up call to all of you. It's just another indication of sloppiness, forgetfulness, asleep at the switch, on the part of people in charge. And it's been going on for too many years. Now, this may not be a problem that is the town's fault, I realize that, it could be the state. But at any rate, please, dot every i and cross every t, and you may have to get people to help you do it, because you're terribly, terribly busy. But these little details, as we see now, can rear their ugly heads later on, and then we have to go through all of this. So thank you for your work, and let's just put this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Members of the Board of Selectmen, I'm Thomas Daley, and I reside at 10 Southport Woods Drive. I sent a message to all of you, and I thank you for the responses I've received. I'm not going to take your time unnecessarily. It seems like we're headed in the right direction. Really, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your thoughtful replies and for the excellent discussion that we have had today in the presentation of the town attorney. It seems like this project is headed in the right direction towards completion, finally. I closed my message to the members of the board by pointing out that this was really a great thing for the town, that such a large grant was received under this state open space program through the efforts of people like Mrs. Salamini, who were on the Land Acquisition Commission at the time. And it's a particularly valuable piece of open space for the reasons pointed out by the previous speakers, and also I would add that it is very close to a number of pieces of Aspetuck Land Trust privately-owned open space, which adds to the benefits available to the town and the townspeople. So I thank you very much for your time and attention.
And thank you for your concerns coming in today. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Please come up to the mic.
Good afternoon. My name is James Pajura. I live at 1158 Mill Hill Road in Southport, diagonally across from the entrance to the open space parcel. Now, I'd just like to say from my property, this, the Mill Hill open space area, the 37 acres, is used on a daily basis heavily. I mean, it's, it's, there are people there daily, hiking, going in for photography, walking, just enjoying the space, and, you know, I'm just here to, I appreciate that, because I too use it, and I like what I've heard today. So I just wanted to bring it up to speed, maybe on a little attendance issue there, that in fact, the area is used, so it was a good acquisition, and hopefully, we can keep it in that.
All right. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public to comment? Okay, seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments from the board? Kristin?
I would like to thank all the speakers who took their time to write and to come today to advocate for this. Mr. Sturgis, I am looking at the March 27, 2000 minutes, and you spoke on behalf of the night that this was voted on. Just did want to point out that, yes, there was some disagreement, but that the vote in favor of this appropriation for the land was 37 in favor, two opposed, and three abstentions. So it was overwhelmingly supported by the members of the legislative body, the RTM at the time. I, I think this has been an exercise in, you know, sometimes we take things for granted, and it's been a great way to highlight what an incredible resource we have. I think the comment about dotting i's and crossing t's, those little things that sometimes can be pesky procedural matters are important, and I think that's what we're, we're doing here. I intend to vote in support of following through on this so that we can clean things up in terms of the legalities and, and move this forward and maintain this amazing piece of property. It's a gem for our town.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments?
I'm good, sir.
I think it's about time that we put this matter to bed. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much for coming down. Next item up is a private executive session on personnel matters with the town attorney. So I'm going to have to ask everybody to please leave the room, and to our cameras in back, please turn those off, along with the sound, please.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
May I have a motion to come out of private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to clarify, there were no motions made, no votes taken in private executive session. May I have a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Next up on the agenda is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.